Roll call, please.
Trustee Waterman is absent. Trustee Mumpson?
Present.
Trustee Stewart?
Here.
Vice President Uvalde?
Here.
President Wilson?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board met in closed session. In closed session on Agenda Item Number 2.1, the Board took action to suspend without pay two permanent classified employees for cause. In closed session on Item 2.3, the Board provided direction to staff with respect to taking legal action regarding the subject claim on Agenda Item Number 2.3. And no other... No other decisions were made in closed session. Agenda. Approval of Minutes... Oh, I'm sorry, Student Discipline Matters?
Madam President, I'd like to move that we act, accept the recommendation for student AHP-94. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the recommendation to expel student S-2013AHP-94. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None? The hearing panel's recommendation is accepted. Minutes for June 5th, 2013.
I would move to approve Minutes?
Okay. Let's make sure that everybody who are present at... It has been moved and seconded that the minutes of June 5th, 2013 are approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes for June 5th are approved. Moving to the July 1st Minute Special Governing Board Meeting Minutes. Please look to... Make sure that you were present to make a motion or to second it.
Move to approve?
I second it, madam.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Special Governing Board Minutes for July 1st, 2013. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes for July 1st, 2013, Special and Governing Board Meeting are approved. Minutes of July 10th, Governing Board Meeting.
I was not present at that time, Madam President.
I would move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Minutes for July 10th Governing Board Meeting. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Minutes... And one abstention. Minutes for July 10th approved. Minutes of July 19th, Special Governing Board Meeting.
I move that we adopt the July 19th, 2013 meeting, Madam President.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the July 19th Special Governing Board Meeting Minutes are accept... Are approved. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes for July 19th, 2013, Special Governing Board Meeting are approved. Adoption of the Agenda.
I would move to adopt the Agenda as it is written.
Second it, Madam President.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the Agenda as printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The Minutes... I mean, the Agenda is approved as printed. Recognitions, Item 6.1, United Way Bay Area Roadmap to Cut Poverty, Bay Area Poverty. Resolution Number 2595.
Thank you, President Wilson, to our Governing Board, Vice President Uvalde, Trustee Stewart, and Mumpson, to Dr. Bishop and Mrs. Weatherly. It is being recommended that the Governing Board adopt Resolution Number 2595, United Way Bay Area Roadmap to Cut Bay Area Poverty. This is an Agenda Item that was recommended to be continued from two meetings ago when United Way... Actually, First Five Solano came and presented the United Way Cut Poverty in Half by 2020. They presented their proposal to the Board, and the Board had made the recommendation that we wanted to have a resolution made in honor of this particular campaign.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Dr. Uvalde to please read the resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. Resolution 2595, United Way Bay Area Roadmap to Cut Bay Area Poverty. We do hereby consent to the adoption of the following resolution. We, the Vallejo City Unified School District Governing Board, support the United Way Bay Area's goal to cut poverty in half by 2020. We view our organization as one of the many catalysts to strengthen our community by investing in one another. We know that one in five Bay Area residents lives in poverty, and because of this, the Vallejo City Unified School District Governing Board supports United Way's efforts in focusing on three key drivers of economic success. First, ensure building blocks are in place, that is, healthcare, childcare, food, housing, financial services, technology access. Two, close education gap, more student graduate high schools and are ready for college and all 21st century careers. Three, develop a vibrant local economy that creates good jobs and offer pathways to employment. That is the resolution before us, Madam President. Yes.
Do we have a representative here?
No.
But we need to approve this and act United.
With that in mind, Madam President, I move that we adopt 2595. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2595, United Way Bay Area Roadmap to Cut Poverty. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Resolution 2595 has been adopted. At this time, will Item 7.1, Staff Reports?
Yes, President Wilson, this evening... Woo, sorry about that. We have a teacher from Vallejo High School this evening. Mr. Benezra, every year at the end of the year makes an appointment with me and then presents me these wonderful books with writings by his students. And the book was so well done this year, usually I just pass on your copies to you and you get them, but I just needed him to come forward and talk with you a little bit more about what he does at Vallejo High School to get students to this point. So, thank you for accepting our invitation to come forward, Mr. Benezra. If you'd come forward to the mic and also introduce the students that you have with you, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, for inviting me to be here. This is two students from our Hospitality and Tourism Academy, Sylvia Garcia and E.J. Padgett. So, we thank them so much for taking time out of their busy day to present these books to you. By the way, they've been spending the day hosting students from Japan, giving them a tour of Vallejo, the Jelly Belly Factory, and other places, so thank you so much for being here. I'd also like to thank Principal Clarence Isador, who really assured the lion's share of funding for this year's project, and who personally took time out of his schedule to come to each of my psychology classes and sit down and relate and model his inspiring, heartfelt story of his life, modeling this whole project for our students. So, thanks to Mr. Isador and who also recommended Calvin Harrell of ABC Publishing, ABC Printing and School Photos, who took this to another level. And I have to say, Mr. Harrell really took this at more than just a business level. He really had his heart in it and came through on time with a really professional level and was inspiring in comments and brainstorming about expanding the project. So, thanks to Mr. Harrell. And especially, I want to thank the students who shared their lives in this book. We were inspired by The Freedom Riders, which you probably have heard of, who were students who created a book that became a number-one New York Times bestseller. And I don't know about that, but I tell my students that their stories are every bit as interesting and amazing and horrible and wonderful as those stories. So, they voted on their own title, "A Light in the Darkness," and so they learned that their lives are important and can inspire us, and that by sharing their stories, they give to not only themselves, but they give to each other and to all of us. I remember a student who told a story. Just to give you a specific example from the book, a young male student who'd been sexually molested, who had grown up to find out that his sexual orientation was to be gay, who was struggling with a difficult, very difficult home life with a single parent who was not accepting of his sexual orientation. And he related. And he told his story, and they didn't have to tell anything they didn't feel comfortable about, write about anything they didn't feel comfortable about. But one thing he said in his story was, "I know there's at least one person out there who's going to relate to what I've been through," and that inspired him to really go out on a limb and share what he did. So many students did that, and I'm very proud of them for what they did. So, yeah, this is history. We did this end-of-the-year project. This is a primary document of current U.S. history after CSTs. We did our own U.S. history, Life in Vallejo. In Psychology, they wrote in their journals every Friday, and we were really able to take this to another level of sharing and finding out that sharing your story, writing your story, is a cathartic process. And Alfonso Tucker, by the way, came to every one of my classes, not this year but the year before, and presented his amazing story of turning his life around through narrative therapy. So, you know that this corresponds with the district's policy, I believe, of anti-bullying and the president's policy of anti-gun violence. Not only communication, but I can't think of a better, more proactive, simpler, cost-effective way to have preventative mental health in the schools, just sharing your story in a safe environment. So, thank you. I hope that you will find a way seriously to support this and other projects. So, really, just, this book is about getting to know our students and creating an environment where they can have a safe and encouraging learning environment, and I look forward to being part of this vision in the future. So, thank you so much for your time and for inviting us, and thank you.
Are there any comments by Board members?
Director Stewart?
Congratulations. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We've seen others like this in the past, but putting it in this form for the students, I'm guessing, gives it extra value. This is part of your experience now. This is who you relate to with your classmates that you were in school with. And as you mentioned, and it's a very interesting way of looking at it, it is a therapeutic way of dealing with some of the things you may not know how to deal with. This is sharing without having to, you know, do face-to-face, here's my struggle that I deal with internally, placing it on paper. And I noticed that there is an anonymous section for some of the kids who may not feel comfortable, but it still lets them speak their mind and their story. Very powerful, and I appreciate this type of work, and thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, I too want to commend and thank Vallejo High School for this beautiful, outstanding project. It really brings you closer to the students and understand the challenges and sacrifices that they make as a student. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
This is truly an amazing book, and I'm sure that it can be a bestseller. Which academy will you be linked to it? Because I can just see part of this with the Performing Arts Academy and the spoken word at Vallejo High School. Mr. Garcia will be there, and these students, I just had the opportunity, I flipped a one and read a one whole page very quickly, and it's just absolutely amazing. This is a very professional... I know the work that Mr. Harrell does is always very professional, but it's not only the work that Mr. Harrell did, it's the work that's inside the book. It's the words. It's the stories. And this is truly amazing. And somehow, we... How many copies did we have made?
Well, each student got one.
Okay.
Administrators got one. I have a few extra.
Okay, because somehow, we must let others see this. The grand jury might be interested in seeing it, so that they would know our children. Thank you.
Madam President, I have one more question. You mentioned, sir, that Akashi delegation were at school today. Were you able to give them a book?
Actually, to be honest, no. That was a separate occasion, and this all happened in the last few days and hours. But are you going to go back to the reception while you have a copy?
I think they would be thrilled to read the particular stories and see how many of them could identify.
That's a great idea.
The fact that it's a different culture, but the kids are kids, and they're all going through a lot of challenges in their lives, and I think this will be an exciting copy to share with them. Thank you for your thoughtfulness.
Great idea. Just again, thank you so much for coming and sharing. We really appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Bishop, for having the foresight to bring them to us rather than just through your office. Thank you so much.
Thank you for receiving it.
And I'm going to make sure that I visit your classroom. How much are the books?
Well, at cost, it's about 10, but you look on the back, Mr. Harrell did that.
I don't have my glasses on. Twenty dollars? Okay. Well, you know, this is a bestseller, so we need to get them sold. Thank you so much.
I hope the principal, Madam President, would autograph this. And the students.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? This was definitely worth having a staff report. Community members? Mr... Oh, is that... Was that him? Okay, okay. Janet? I'm not going to try it. I always mess it up. Tremont? Tremont.
Good evening. My name's Janet Tremont. On August 1st, at President Wilson's request, the seniors advisory committee met with President Wilson and Sherri Summers of the school district, and we thank President Wilson for initiating the meeting. Sherri reported on the status of the transition of the older adult classes. It was a very detailed report, and we thank Sherri for her report. The committee's view of... View is that of cautious optimism. Of note, we understand the Zumba exercise class was successfully transitioned to GVRD along with its pre-existing instructor. The Fit After 50 exercise class resumes under GVRD on August 12th with its new instructor, who shadowed the class two times but has not actually led the class. The Stars dementia and respite program is to continue under Adventist with a new lead instructor and at an increased interim fee, but with the intention and a plan to lower the fee. Caregivers' training is included in the Adventist Fall catalog. The rest of the transition classes were in various stages of being handled with the expectation that they are to be completed in time for the fall semester starting in September. President Wilson and Sherri Summers restated the school district, GVRD, and Adventist are committed to successfully transitioning all the classes, and they are all committed to work together to make the transition happen. As an aside and for clarification, the Times Herald newspaper, I believe yesterday, stated that the adult school name change to be considered tonight was recommended by a citizens advisory committee, and that's just on record, this was not this committee. We had no role in this. President Wilson asked Sherri Summers to report in October on the status of the transition. The committee is invited. We hope the report will be of a successful transition of all the older adult classes. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions by the Board? Thank you for the report, and it was... And I want to thank Sherri for her hard work and setting the meeting up, and I want to thank the adult school representatives, student representatives, who were very good at working collaboratively with us in our plans, and as I said at the meeting, the follow-up, so that we will see how the transition is going. I plan on continuing to have follow-up, and I'm sure the next Board President will also, so that we can gauge how we're doing. We know that we may have to tweak some things. We know that everything won't be put in stone immediately, because this was our first quarter, I guess, or semester, or however you... However, the length of the term, our first term under the new construct. So, working together, it can be successful, and I appreciate everyone's effort. Dr. Uvalde?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I too want to express my appreciation for your committee, for the hard work that you're doing, and I was privileged enough to sit in on any meetings, and I know that's a lot of work and quite comprehensive in discovering the many things that the students would like to see happen, and I want to express that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I have a call from Robert Shesel?
Why don't I wait until you get the papers? Let me start by saying I want to talk about three things, two of them very quickly. I want to thank you for starting to put up the videos. I know there was some skepticism, but at VIB, it's generated a lot of discussion that has engaged people. Some of it may have been critical, but I think it's putting out the right thing, and I would suggest that you look at the comments. I think you would find the insights helpful. And secondly, I want to clarify, I did pay $12 for a DVD, and that Ms. Weatherly can... I think she remembers, I gave her cash, which she didn't expect, and that it's not free, as stated by your IT staff. I'd like to spend most of the time talking about your website, and let me preface it by saying, it suffers from the same problem a lot of websites suffer from. It's got what I call the GADA syndrome. You've got to have this in it, you've got to have that. You have too much on the front page. And you need to start to look at statistics that's generated by your webpage to see what people are actually using. And let me give you some examples of things. Why are the teacher's quick links taking up real estate on the front page? It's only used by the teachers, so have a little tab called Teachers Only. You list things like district goals, but they're static. You try clicking on All Students Graduating with A to G Requirements Met, but nothing happens. And even when I did a search, I got something called Common Core. How am I supposed to know that's the same thing as A to G? When I click on Bullying, I'm sent to a second page with all kinds of stuff, and I actually have to go to a third page to even find anything. Just the opposite is the Fraud page, which is much less frequently used. That's real easy to understand, and I would wonder why, like in the bullying, you don't have little links to the DVD materials and other things. I also think some obvious things, like there's no tab for all the phone numbers. It's really hard to find phone numbers on your website. You have a section called Safe Schools Locker Page. None of... Some of the text isn't linked to anything, and the PDFs in it often seem more for teachers than for the public, and you might want to revise that. There's no general link for people who only speak Spanish. I don't know what percentage there is, but I think that would be helpful for them also. You have something called the Leadership Institute, but you never really define it, and even when you go there, the link doesn't work. And like with your complaint forms, you can't fill them online, so the question is, if there's a reason, tell people why they have to send it in. And I have some recommendations. Just use two or three people to revise the process. Doing it by committee is just a guarantee of a failure.
Look at your web statistics. I have about 20, 30 more seconds.
That's fine.
Like, I think you also have to bring in people who almost never use your website, because the people who use it, they can get around because they finally figured it out. And one of the things that I thought, you should have contests at each school about what people at that school... You know, the students, what would they like to see on that webpage? And I think for the kids who are older, like in junior... And I think for the kids who are older, like in junior high or high school, maybe where they have some kind of computer thing or some, or an art thing, maybe they should design their own front page. So, I, I think there's some ways that you could make this a really interesting experience, and, and particularly for the older kids, a really valuable one. I mean, not very many people have a chance to design their own website. And I, and finally, once you get it redesigned, bring in some more people who've never, who don't normally use your webpage, and have them test it out. I think if you have to explain something to someone, it's not clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
Um, sorry, Dr. Shackelford, can you just come to the mic and just explain where we are with regard to our rebranding efforts, the websites, the logos, and, um, who we're utilizing with regard to that particular effort? Thank you.
Good evening again, Board, and to our community. As, um, follow-up to some of the recommendations that were just made, we are in a transition period in revising and updating our webpage. We are working with, um, a company around our rebranding, um, and working collaboratively with, um, partners from our, um... We're partnering with the adult school, do you have that brochure? We are partnering with, uh, the Adult School Regional Career Center PR Department around, um, upgrading our own system. And so, just so that our community knows, as well as our board, that that is something we have already started to begin to revise, so. Look forward to updates in the near future.
Thank you. I know that you, uh, it had already been brought to our attention that, uh, we were in the process of doing the updates. I would ask you to, uh, pass, uh, uh, these comments on, and any other comments that we receive from the community. We're always welcome, we always welcome, uh, comments, uh, negative comments, positive comments, and those in between. And certainly, we can use, yeah, um, whatever, uh, uh, input from the, uh, public and others. So, uh, please pass these comments on, and thank you for, uh, bringing them. Miss, Mr., um...
Doctor.
Doctor. Oh, okay, doctor. I have a daughter who's a doctor also, and she generally has me called her by her name. So, yes, okay, doctor. Deborah Sears.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deborah Sears. I'm a parent of two children here in this district. Um, I, and they attend Mare Island Health and Fitness Academy. I actually live in the Saint Vincent's Hill neighborhood. So, just to let everybody know, our new watchers with the VIB, hello. So, I actually am commenting about that. I think it's great that we have the school board meetings online, and thank you, Robert, for getting that moving. I know we talked about a week or two ago. I told you I'm sure the board would have no problem making that happen, and, and I appreciate the VIB and Mark Garman and others who, um, pushed that forward, so thanks. So, I'm glad that we have access and feedback, twenty-four seven, all the time. I've been looking at it all weekend. We had about fifty-one comments, I think, to the grand jury video. It's very nice. I appreciate that there's more community involvement in our schools. Yay, you know that's been something we wanted. And our community is actually very thoughtful. They talk about the behaviors, achievement, they're concerned about that. They, they talk about special education opportunities, et cetera. I also like that the, the comments are evolving. They're not entrenched. You know, some people may start one way, and they kind of evolve, so it's good to see that, huh, we've got some thoughtful people out there, good to know. And that they have a fairly good understanding of the district's history and challenges. They talk about the CBS bullying stuff, they talk about our bankruptcy, blah, blah, blah. So, good, I'm glad they're informed. What doesn't work well for me, there are a lot of myths still, a lot of misinformation, a lot of vitriol, counterproductive stuff. Kind of creepy couple things, now that we're digital. I'm like, wow, I've been pointed out on the video, it's kind of interesting, okay, whole new world. I found, what doesn't work well for me either is there's no really better answers or solutions out there yet, maybe as they really dive into our meetings, just like I did. I think I've given you better stuff and feedback over the years, so thank you for listening to me. They're not aware of our gains and successes, you know, that we got local control back, that we have the most parent involvement that I've seen in this district since two thousand four. So, yay, parents! We got a lot better data, and we have some common goals. We didn't used to have any of that before. Those are big improvements for people who have been in this district for decades and been waiting. The website comment, Robert. Our website has been greatly improved since I came. So you're seeing version two, so I'm glad that you have a fresh set of eyes. So the comments you're giving back will be that little test for us already, so that's great. We've already done that. Back to what doesn't work well for me on the, the VIB, there's little to no critical thinking about the grand jury report itself. You know, that was the video. I was supposed to comment about the findings, that would have been really great, but we kind of missed that. They only focus on the board and the speakers. Misunderstood accountability out there. It's Ramona's job to fix our schools. Ramona, it's all on you, baby, sorry! Oh, my God! So we need to fix that misunderstanding. What should change? Organize your feedback. So, community, follow the items on the agenda of the meeting today, and then post and say nine point one point one, here's my thoughts. It would help, I think, the board follow what you're saying. It'd be more meaningful for me, as another parent who comes to these meetings all the time. Um, or come, come right here, this, right here. Very meaningful, they see your body language, they understand your sarcasm a little better, get your jokes maybe, I don't know. Respect all parents. Can I say that one more time? I'm a parent. Respect me, respect my choice of this school district, respect that I support this board. The grand jury, respect the parents in this community. The community, respect the parents in this community. Labor and staff, respect us.
The board, thank you for respecting us.
You know, trial and error there for a little while yourselves, but you're getting on your feet, and Ramona, you certainly respect the parents. Community accountability to our schools. It's not just Ramona's job, people. Hello, it's my job, it's all our jobs. Schools are a reflection of their community. Not their parents, not their students, their community. If you haven't figured this out, public schools are a true democratic entity. They reflect what's out here. So please, in our community, be safe to our students. Don't kidnap them anymore. Don't take them away from us. Be responsible to our parents and students and our school sites. Don't steal our copper. Don't vandalize our stuff and waste our money. Community, you out there? Be respectful to me and to my board, to the people in this room. We've been coming here a long time. And I was the same way, so I know why. You get here because you're frustrated, and you think you can change things, and we can. I feel I'm a example of having change happen in this district. So, we'll get P, pass people's angers and frustrations, just like mine. And my last recommendation is, the best investment you can make is to say, "I am proud and I support my Vallejo Public Schools." You can disagree with this, you cannot like us on certain days. I go through that all the time. But at the end of the day, I am a proud parent in this school district, and that is the best investment you can make in your house, your property value, and your community. The other thing you can do is read to a child, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next card, the visitor from the east, Willie Mills.
Good evening, Board. Uh, my name is Willie Mills, a visitor from the east, a former educator and teacher from Peoples High School. I come this day to check out the Peoples business, to see, just to observe and perhaps, perhaps to participate a little bit in, in the Peoples business. I'm not going to follow what just left here, because, um, she did an excellent job. I wanted to say, you know, I was just looking at, I didn't know that you had a grand jury video. I'm some kind of way, I missed that in my business over that way. I missed the video, I wish I had seen it. Yeah, it's too bad, though. But I wanted to say, um, that, first of all, I wasn't not going to get up here on the public comments, but, uh, when I heard the discussion on the website, well, you know, what the gentlemen don't understand, I think that it was referred to earlier by the, the last speaker, that the website, uh, prior to the coming of, uh, Dr. Bishop was probably one of the worst websites I've ever seen. I mean, it's been the, it, it has been a vast improvement over what had, what we had. I mean, I was highly impressed with, with, with the new version of the website, and, and I, I can understand what, what the speaker was talking about. He's seen some things in there that I had not, you know, paid any attention to, but he was looking for some things, and so he found some things. So I hope that you, that you heard what he said. But I just wanted to reiterate that the website, prior to the coming of Dr. Bishop, was bad, 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 bad. So it's highly effective, and I'm, I'm somewhat impressed with it, but, you know, that's me in my personal opinion, based upon historical fact. Not something that came out of my mind or my eye, but historical fact. Thank you.
Thank you. And as always, uh, we appreciate any, uh, uh, comments that any, uh, speaker gives, uh, and certainly, as any website, a website should constantly be changing, updating, and, um, uh, no website should ever stay, stay the same, and there should be constant improvement, et cetera, et cetera, on it. And, uh, of course, I'm sure the good doctor knows that, um, uh, websites are, uh, a constant evolution, and that everyone, um, uh, continues to work toward perfection, but it will always not meet everyone's needs, but it is our desire that they meet the majority of the community's needs. And we will continue to work on, uh, improvement of our website. And thank you for your comments, if, all of our speakers. I have no more cards on, uh, seven point O. Uh, moving on to report of board members, Director Mupson.
Um, I have no comment, except that I'm just very happy to be here, thank you.
I'm glad you're here also. Director Stewart.
Thank you, President Wilson. Solano County Transit Soul Trans will hold a back-to-school fair for our students Friday, August sixteenth, from noon to two, at the Vallejo Transit Center, which is three eleven Sacramento Street in downtown Vallejo. This event will assist students in getting around the city, if necessary, if they're not able to utilize, um, the buses, uh, the bus service that will be provided by the district. Um, and we will have some promotional items for students, and, um, just, it'll be an opportunity to provide information about the transit options for our students. I'm hoping that we'll have, uh, a representative from the district at that event to help clarify some of the changes that have occurred with the service we will be, be providing, um, as a district. So I'll, I'll work with staff on that. We will also have, uh, safe routes to school information provided from the Solano Transportation Authority. So again, that will be held Friday, the sixteenth, from noon to two at the Vallejo Transit Center. Hope to see you there.
Director Uvalde. Director Dr. Uvalde.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I guess I would need to go all the way back to July fourth, when we had, I had the pleasure of, uh, having, uh, participated in a parade with, uh, uh, Trustee Mupson. It's been a long time, uh, that you forgot, huh? Yeah, and also, uh, Mr. Bishop and Dr. Bishop. And, um, and then on the, um, July the ninth, for ten, five days, I participated with our school district, uh, uh, attendants at Orlando, Florida, under the National Academy Foundation, and I learned so much about what the academy program is about. And I'm very, very thrilled that I had the privilege of being asked to participate. And, uh, it's really, truly an understatement for me to say that I learned a lot. It's just incredible what you can learn. And the fact that we are, we are involved with them, and they're willing to work with us, uh, sustains my, my, uh, my confidence that we will really be making a significant contribution. One of the things that I recall so, so, um, excitedly was the, uh, the very first day that the gentle session met, and, uh, Lily Beth Pippen would know this, and, and others who were present, that when they, they keep, you know, they, they ask who are participating in, in this particular model of, you know, of, uh, of, uh, academic, academic programs. And every time we, Vallejo stood up, and, and people were just so excited to see us finally making a difference and making a news at that, at that national body. And then, uh, Dr. Larry Assara met two of his alumni friends from Vallejo, saying, "My goodness, we, we have not heard positive things about Vallejo," and it was so exciting. They were so excited to, to, to announce to, that they're from Vallejo, and, and even the participants were also wondering, "Where did these guys come from, and what's, what's going on with that school?" And so people were, Vallejo made a, made a hit, and in the most positive way. And, um, so I truly learned a lot. And on the, uh, let me see, the twentieth of, uh, of July, I, I spoke at the Trevon Martin Rally at Jesse Bethel. And, um, let me see, and then, August the first, I, uh, participated, uh, with the Loma Vista and, um, Vallejo High School, um, uh, what particular program? Restorative Justice Workshop, and also learned a lot about that. I've been hearing it, and I've been supportive of it, but when, when you experience the actual workshop, you, you understand why, why our school is trying to, to do the best we can to, to really affirm, uh, all of our students. Uh, the second, August, the second, again, Trustee Mupson forgot that he and I got up at eight-thirty in the morning and saw the webinar of the, uh, uh, School Board Association, and he and I met upstairs at the, at the conference office and, and learned as much as we can for, about the local funding. And then, uh, yesterday, at the, uh, Jesse Bethel High School, where VCAT's office is located, Dr. Bishop, uh, invited his, her, uh, her, um, cabinet to, to talk with the VCAT board and discuss, that really is a consultation and memorandum of understanding. Perhaps one of the most positive things that I've heard in a long time, because, because of the fact that there is truly a partnership that's developing, and, and a, and a focus is really to, to assist, enable our kids to become the best, uh, multimedia, uh, students that they could be. And, and I'm glad that we finally had this formal consultation, and I thank, uh, Dr. Bishop personally for, for taking the initiative to make it happen. With that in mind, Madam President, that is my report, thank you.
Since our last meeting, I have, um, uh, met with the adult school, um, representatives, and as I said before, that was a very successful meeting. The last, Monday and Tuesday of last week, and Monday and Tuesday of this week, I have been in, uh, academy trainings and administrative leadership trainings with the district at Jesse Bethel High School, and I have enjoyed every moment, uh, being there. Um, I also attended the Trevon Martin Rally and had the opportunity to speak. I, last evening, I attended the National Night Out in South Vallejo, and that was really a great and dynamic and very large and well-attended community event. I have also attended the Vallejo Education and Business Alliance Meeting on Monday of this week. And that was really a powerful meeting with Solano Community College, Turo University, and Cal Maritime Academy, and Vallejo Unified School District, where we have a partnership that is just really growing with the business community. And looking forward to Vallejo High School and Turo University getting together for tutoring, mentoring, and a career center improvement. Dr. O'Connor was very excited about the possibility. The other thing that he really is looking forward to is although they provide reading tutoring at Merr Island Elementary, what they really would like to also, since Merr Island's theme is, what is their theme? He was not aware that their theme is health and fitness, or maybe he'd forgotten. So he's, you know, just right there, Merr Island Elementary and Turo University. What a marriage and partnership that will be. And then those kids, those students perhaps would then feed into the Health and Fitness Academy at Vallejo High School. Today, I attended Vallejo High School Design Team, working on grand jury topics. And also, there's a two-day training for site safety officers. Today was the first day. I went by and sat in on those, that training. Good training. I'll talk more of those types of things when we get to the grand jury. I also attended the local funding. I also participated via computer at my home, the webinar on local funding. So looking forward to more discussions on that particular topic, and also a study session as more information evolves. So I think that's all I have to re, oh, I did attend a Solano County reception at the fair with the Dr. Bishop and Dr. Uvalde. And that was a very nice evening also. I think that's it. Feel like I'm working rather than retired. But I want to be in the community. And my position as a board member, a retired one especially, is that I don't want the hearsay. I want to be getting the facts directly. So if I'm in the room, I don't have to have a report, given that X, Y, Z is happening. And as a very frequent visitor on Vallejo High's campus, that gives me a lot of firsthand insight. I live a block and a half away, and I'm there at least, the students think I work there. But as we know, I am a retired person that is just a member of the community that is very interested. Thank you. Dr. D. Uvalde.
Yes, Madam President. I, one of the things I've noticed recently is the numbers of our, our staff being so visible in a community, which I have not seen in the past. And I think that this is something, I don't know if it's intentional, but I really see a lot of our staff, and I, and I know, I know parents and students really, really appreciate it. A good example is, there's a principal named Clarence Isador, whom I saw at the county fair. Is he here? Oh, I'm sorry. And just, just, that's, that's a good example of what I'm talking about. That we are becoming more visible in a community. And in the past, I, you know, I, I did not have not witnessed that. So I'm thankful for the design. I don't know who's initiating it, but, but I'm very grateful and thankful to see them out in the field. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. I did forget that last Saturday, well, actually Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I was at Relay for Life, American Cancer Society Relay for Life. And that was very inspiring. I was with a group of young ladies, teenagers, and, and organization. And it was very inspiring to, for them to do their community service at Relay for Life. And to have a focus on health issues. And so I think that really concludes my report. Thank you to all the board members. Report of the superintendent.
Yes, thank you, President Wilson, Vice President Uvalde, Trustees Mompson and Stewart. This evening, my report is very brief. I certainly, definitely want to piggyback and thank the Senior Advisory Committee and Mr. and Mrs. Tremert particularly. I was selling sherry. Mrs. Tremert must have executive background, because I look at some of your notes and I say, "Wow." We thank you so much for helping us with this transition. And to our community, what I'd say is that our new Vallejo City Unified School District Regional Career Center, we have the brochures in the background, if our community hasn't seen them. And they're out and about in the community. But basically, this is going to be an exciting, exciting program. And there are open houses scheduled for August 16th, I'm sorry, August 15th at 6:30, as well as August 17th at 10:00 a.m. for our new and improved adult school. Very exciting classes. Makes me want to go back to school. If I wasn't so squeamish, I might, might take phlebotomy or something. At any rate, I do thank the Senior Advisory, all the staff, everyone that helped us get to this place. And we will continue to modify until we get it just, just right. And I do want to say also that I think confidence is that enrollment continues to come in. Every day, our schools have parents coming in. And at this point, with regard to our TK program, we only have 15 slots left, if we stick with the original projection. So 1-5, we only have 15 slots left in TK.
Could I ask, do you take earlier? Because I tell you, he's, he's ready.
He's ready. Yeah, yeah.
He is ready.
Are we talking about the three-month-old, or are we talking about?
Well, you know, I haven't tested the three-month-old.
Very good.
But let me tell you about the two-year-old, who's, will be three on September the 2nd. I know he's ready.
Thank you, President Wilson.
Take it from his grandma. His grandma knows.
At any rate, that concludes my report, and I do thank all concerned.
Okay, I guess he won't get in early. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Moving on to nine point one point one, Open Enrollment Research Findings. Dr. Christopher Morris from Vallejo High School.
Good evening, President Wilson. Thank you for having me. Trustees, Dr. Bishop, Miss Weatherly, Cabinet, Community. The, so first, I'll start by saying the research on open enrollment was conducted not in Vallejo, so a, a school district here in Northern California, larger school district, 47,000 students, K-12, nine comprehensive high schools, adult school, continuation school. First, we'll start with, I guess, how much time? Okay, I can go on for, but I won't. So, Val, let's go to the next slide. So the, oh, and Ms. Weatherly, what I'll do is, as going through here, I found a couple of typos. What I'll do is tomorrow, I'll forward you one that has, that's all corrected. So rather than go through, since you have the presentation in front of you, rather than go through all of the, the details, what I'd like to do is spend some more time on the new, the findings, and maybe some of the more nuanced findings that aren't spelled out that overtly in the, in the printed document. So if we look at the problem, this is what, the, the next slide. Oh, you don't have this one? Oh, I thought it showed up on your screens. I'm sorry.
It's, it's over on theirs. Turn it on, it might help.
So what really got me started on this, on studying open enrollment, was me as a principal in a school that was suffering from declining enrollment. And I started to dig into the, the research. I had to step back. It kind of blew me away, because what I was expecting to find was that open enrollment was the problem, why the school was not doing well. You know, you fall into this trap of, "If only our top students would stay." If it was only for open enrollment, you know, that was, that was a problem. So it really challenged some of the beliefs of the staff I was working with, and me personally. But what I did find is this problem of declining enrollment in, in urban schools, causing a loss of programs, and then it decreases the opportunities available for those students that are, that are, that remain at their home school. Fewer opportunities for advanced AP classes, visual performing arts, art classes, music, career technical ed classes, tend to be the ones that go when the students leave. Next slide. The study is really significant because of the growing number of economically disadvantaged students that really are unable to access current school choices. We get to the findings, we'll see some of those reasons why. You know, and it's really our imperative as school leaders to focus on those schools, those urban schools where parents don't have the ability to access school choice. And then those schools that are also geographically isolated, that don't allow parents to readily travel across town to get to another school. Like I alluded to, the data, the next slide, is from a large school district. This 42,000 number is really representative only of the students that are within the district. There's another 5,000 or so students that are inter-districts, that come from outside of the district. So really, this study focused on only those students that live within the district boundaries, focused on high school. And as you can see from the pie chart there, the, the demographics were representative of, there were no racial or ethnic groups that were not represented in this study or a school district. So what I did was, first, looking at the demographic and enrollment data from all 42,000 students. Surprisingly, 51% of all students in this school district did not attend their home school. When you subtract some of the, the open enrollment magnet schools, there were still 49% of students not attending the school within their boundaries. But they stayed in their district. These aren't kids leaving the district. This is within the district. You look at a particular high school of 3,000 students, and 1,200 were outside the boundaries. So kids were coming and going at a pretty large, pretty, pretty large rate. Let's go two slides ahead. Within the district. So the district provided data on neighborhood school and choice school. Age, grade of the child, their home language, primary language, ethnicity, gender, English proficiency, and socio-economic status. So in determining low socioeconomic status or not low, we used students eligible for free and reduced lunch were categorized as low SES. And also, we added the additional parents who did not, the highest educational level parent was, was not a high school graduate. So those two factors. There was a total of 29 variables that we looked at, so 29 variables from 42,000 students. The next part of the, go ahead, next slide. Next thing we did is we identified, okay, which students in high school, so first, identify the families that were participating in open enrollment. We did that just by comparing their home school versus the school that they were going to. And we sent, I sent out 500 surveys to parents, 1,000 surveys, actually, 500 to non-participating parents, 500 to participating parents. 14 questions examining the next set of variables. So Val, go ahead and go to the next slide. And these are the things that were asked. Questions relate to school safety, principal leadership, school programs, school's academic performance. The next category, the next question, racial and ethnic diversity of the schools, is difficult really to get at. The question was, you know, the degree to which racial or ethnic diversity influenced your, your enrollment decisions. Now, that presumed that they considered it. So we did ask some, some, on the open-ended question, responses, some parents did indicate that, "Well, you know, I didn't really think about race or ethnicity." So it'll take a little bit more in that area to determine to what degree did or is race or ethnicity a factor in your enrollment decisions. Distance and transportation, and lastly, peer group influences. So a series of 14 questions examined those variables. The next slide. You know, Val, let's go to the graph. This is going to be a little bit more easier visual. Okay. That first bar, API of home school lower than the district average. If your home school, the school that you were assigned to, was, had API of lower than the district average, you were 175% more likely to participate in open enrollment. So that was the biggest indicator. So performance of the school. The next largest group was a group difficult to identify, but parents who identified as other Asian. So when we did a little, those typically tended to be biracial or multiracial families that had one parent that was Asian, that didn't consider themselves, you know, Chinese, Japanese, Filipino, Korean. Southeast Asian was a completely different category. But this tended to be more so, it wasn't East Indian. This tends to be more so biracial or multiracial families that had at least one parent that was Asian. Also females. Females is the fourth bar. Females were more likely to participate in open enrollment. And students whose home language is other than English that are white. So these were typically European students, Russian, Ukrainian, Romanian. Students who identified as white but had a home language other than English typically participated in open enrollment to a greater degree. Now, this is the part that blew me away. This is the part that made me step away and nearly changed my topic. Because when you read the rationale that school districts typically use for developing open enrollment policies, they're usually saying something like, "In order to provide means for students in low-performing schools to exit," in order to provide students that are historically underrepresented in college, typically, they're talking about black, Latino, and poor kids, is what they're saying. We want black, Latino, and poor kids to give them the opportunity to leave their home school and go to another school. But the data from the 42,000 students showed that if your home language was other than English and you were not white, you were 48% less likely to participate in open enrollment. Those were our English learners, predominantly our Latino students, Latino and Asian students. Low socioeconomic status, if you earn free and reduced lunch or your parents did not graduate high school, you were 32% least likely, less likely to participate in open enrollment. And African-American students were nearly 18% least likely to participate in open enrollment. So really, the caveat in developing open enrollment policies and plans is if we're, if the policy is specifically targeting black, Latino, and poor students, then we'll see in my recommendations, there are some ways that we can address those. But in this particular school district, these 42,000 students that were studied, those groups were least likely to participate. Controlling for all other factors, they were the least likely to participate in open enrollment. Let's go to the next slide. Now, within the, the red bar is non-participating parents. Those are parents that stayed at their home school. From a scale of one to five, on the question of childcare, which is the one, or childcare and transportation, that's the bar furthest to the right. Why do parents stay at their home school? The number one reason was childcare and ease of transportation. It's number one reason why, controlling for all other factors. And Clarence should like this one. The next reason was, "The principal ensures that needs of all students are met." So principal leadership matters. Principal leadership matters in parents staying at their home school. Controlling for other factors, if it's close, and I believe that the leadership of the school is meeting the needs of all students, parents will stay. Now, the other caveat is that most of the parents participating in open enrollment Now, the other caveat is that most of the parents participating in open enrollment have never joined. So it's not that the parents left the school, it's that the parents never chose to go. So it's difficult for them to really talk about principal leadership of a school that they've never attended. But for parents that do attend, why do they stay? They stay for transportation and principal leadership. Even when they identified drugs and alcohol and fights and conflict, bullying, intimidation as concerns, they still stayed because those other things trumped them. Also, difficult for parents who participate in open enrollment to respond on the question of bullying because they have never sent their child there. So it's another caveat, another nuance that really didn't come up until the end when we're looking at the survey results. You know, how can they really talk about bullying if they never sent their child there? But it's not a reason that they're choosing not to go. They're not saying, I'm not gonna send my child to that school because there's too much bullying. When we look at some of the other findings, we'll see that they have other reasons for, for not attending. Let's go to the next slide. Why do they, so, this is why they, this is another reason why they stay. Zero to one, this was a yes or no question. To what degree did preferred academic programs influence your decision to stay at your home school? Seventy-five percent of parents that stay at their home school said they stay at their home school because of academic programs. We're gonna get to a list of what those programs were. Also, visual performing arts, parents will stay at their home school. But that last bar is interesting. That's point nine seven, that's ninety-seven percent. Ninety-seven percent of all the parents who responded to the survey said that the reason they go to a different school is not because of negative characteristics of the home school. They're going because of more positive characteristics of the choice school. Difficult to understand, but what they're saying is, it's not, we're not choosing against your home school. I am choosing for something else. It makes sense? So they're not saying, I'm not gonna go there because of something negative. I'm gonna choose this because this is more positive. So they're not, open enrollment in this study was not a choice against your home school. It was a choice for something else that was offering something that my home school typically didn't. Valerie, let's go two slides ahead, it's a little bit easier to see. So I highlighted the programs that appeared on both questions, on both responses. The left side is non-participants. These are kids that stay at their home school. Why do you stay? And that's a list of reasons why they stay. They stay for AP classes, AVID, band. This was open-ended, they had the opportunity to write in. The question was, if you choose to stay because of programs, what are those programs? And these are the programs that were listed. AP, AVID, band, choir, drama. Evening of the Arts was a program specific to a school. GATE, High Achiever classes, Home Economics, International Baccalaureate, IB programs. International Studies, ROTC. Morning Sing, I think this, a survey went out to a elementary parent by mistake, but well, I don't know if we're doing a morning sing in a high school. Plays, talent shows. That's why they stay. Why do they leave? What are you going for? And the list on the left are the things that they're looking for. And the things that appeared on both lists were drama, GATE, IB programs. Visual performing arts appeared on both lists. Parents will stay if they have the preferred programs, and they will leave your school if your school does not have the preferred programs that they want. Let's go, go forward to, let's see. Let's go summary of findings. Is that it there? Okay, so essentially, just recap, if a child's neighborhood school has a lower API, they'll leave. They identify as other Asian, if they're female, and if they're white and they speak a language other than English. Those are the factors that caused, that were more significant. Now, some other things that were suggestive, not numerically significant, but if your child speaks any race other than English at home, non-participation, low socioeconomic status in children that are African-American. Those tend, those were the three groups that participated in open enrollment to the least amount, the least degree. The next slide, Valerie. We're looking at policy implications. From a purely economic standpoint, from the, for the economists in the room, it's really market-driven. Parents will travel and they will go in search of the programs that they're looking for. And you cannot ignore the repelling effect of your low API. If you have a low API score, parents, without anything, they'll look at that number, and that is the greatest repelling effect. The greatest outcomes appear to be for participants. If you participate in open enrollment, data from studies indicated that those are the ones who benefited. Conversely, you can imply that if you don't participate and you're at that school, you'll benefit least. You know, policies must consider equity and the impact of dissolving social cohesions in communities. I think that's gonna be pretty much the topics of some of my further study, is that what happens when your neighborhood school no longer is representative of the community? What happens when the neighborhood school is no longer that social emotional glue that holds everything together? What happens when all the, the kids in the neighborhood go to different schools? What does that do to the cohesion of the neighborhood? And lastly, since poor and African-American and non-white speakers of language, non-white speakers of languages other than English are not numerically significant in terms of participation in an open enrollment, means if they don't participate, it is problematic to assert that these policies will benefit those groups. So, when we're developing policies to say that we're going to do it in order to help poor, black, English learners, the data just does not suggest that those are the groups that are participating. The last slide is the, just bullets of the recommendations, but I think you have an additional attachment that is more comprehensive when looking at the recommendations. See if I have that in front of me. Ensure that high schools have the option to offer all the programs that the community desires. That means, Gigi, we're gonna ask you for some more FTE pretty soon. If, 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 if parents are in search of particular programs, then one of the things, again, a lot of, some of these may be cost prohibitive, we have to look at, at, at economics. But if they're in search of certain programs, we have to do our best to make sure that all high schools can offer the programs that parents and the community desires. Second recommendation is, provide more and better information to the most vulnerable groups. Similar to the comments related to website, it can't, we can't stop there. How do we get our speakers of languages other than English information, good quality information? And then parents that don't have the social capital or have this network of, how do you get information? How do we get that information to families? So if we're gonna have a policy, we have to make sure that the information is available to all. The third recommendation is adding transportation to foster more participation. We saw that parents stay at their home school because of proximity. If we want to make open enrollment something that works, we, school districts should look at adding transportation as kind of that great equalizer. And lastly, tap into the educational aspirations of the poor. I know earlier this week, Dr. Bishop, you had asked, you know, who's got their college degree? Whose parents, whose children are going to college? I mean, what are their aspirations? Is it career technical ed? Is it, let me just get my babies to graduate high school, 'cause no one in my family ever has. I want my kids to go through college. I want them just to be safe. What are the educational aspirations of the communities that we serve? And we can't compare, urban schools cannot compare their schools to other schools. We have to really develop policies that address the needs of the folks we serve. I'm not sure if I went over or not, Dr. Shaq, but, okay. I could go on, I know, I know, we gotta go. Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity. Mr. Venezra left. Last little plug for him, I couldn't figure out why so many kids wanted his class. That class psychology was bursting at the seams, but, yeah, very sought after. And thank you to Miss Lily Beth Pinpin's courses, so shout out to them. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Thanks Valerie, appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any comments by the board? We have some cards. Very interesting information, and I assume this is part of your dissertation?
Yes, yes, this was it.
Very interesting information. And I applaud you for sharing it.
I had some good mentors.
I can remember trying to read my daughter's dissertation, and it was like ninety-some pages, and I'd get to page five and lose interest. I'm not interested in psychology, I assure you. And I found that very quickly. But we commend you. Excellent. Deborah Sears?
Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This information is very interesting. I'm kind of just a geek about it myself, because I go to my neighborhood school. It was a thoughtful strategy based on our move here to Vallejo. And it's one that reaffirms every year that I stay for different reasons. One, because we like it, and the staff is really getting better and improving. And two, childcare, transportation, just like the study shows. And my third reason is investing in my community, my house. I go to my neighborhood schools, so hopefully my property value will help in the long run. So I was gonna ask that question. How does this correlate to property values? Open enrollment, property values. How does that impact anything? What about a school that's both, like my school? We are a neighborhood school, and we have a lottery for open enrollment. Not sure why, really, because you can choose any school. Don't know why we need the lottery. Because my goal is that our neighborhood people go to our neighborhood school, so people move to my neighborhood. St. Vincent's Hill. Okay? So, anyway. So I'd like to know a little bit more of that in your research, if that helps you kind of do any others. What is the parent trigger impact? You knew I'd ask that question. So, now that's a law in California, going on the books like two, three years now, maybe. How does that impact choice? Do people feel more empowered to stay in their neighborhood school? Because they know they can trigger it if it doesn't work out? That's kind of empowering to me. I don't know. And then safety. I know perception about safety was asked. But are there real safety variations? Do I need to be worrisome about something differently? The other thing in your data that has piqued my interest now is the greatest outcomes appear to be for participants of open enrollment. They benefited in some way. That was my first question to Sherri Summers when I moved to this district. How do I know I've placed my kid in the right school? Kind of a big question. She did well in answering it. And it convinced me to stay. And I hear a lot about, and I had the same kind of thought, will my son's advanced proficiency degrade? Is he gonna lose something by going to the school? It's my daughter. Because, you know, I taught them to read, I got them there, et cetera. Well, my son's now in fifth grade. And you know, we've rewarded him for great scores on his CSTs. He's sustaining that, did that a couple of years. We'll see how fifth grade goes. His reading level was my real concern. He's now at a twelve-point-seven, fifth grade. So I would say staying in my neighborhood school that's disadvantaged has been okay. He hasn't lost anything yet. I am concerned about, as programs come up, like for high school, et cetera. But Vallejo High is our neighborhood school. So, we'll start there first. Anyway, thanks for the thoughtful presentation and hope my feedback helped.
As always, thank you, Deborah, for bringing a parent's point of view. And that's really appreciated, a parent's point of view. Mr. Willie Mims?
To the board again. I just wanted, had a couple of things to say. First of all, I thought that the report was excellent. I have not seen anything like that presented anywhere. So, you know, my hand goes out to the doctor on his report. I just had a couple of concerns. You know, I have concerns about everything. One of the things that would concern me was that the, the reason why students or parents leave schools, and he cited the low API scores. Well, you know, the problem with that is that the majority of the parents don't have any idea what API is. I mean, you can ask nine out of ten parents, and they, they can't tell you anything about an API. So, I just wanted to make sure that's clear. One of the other things that, that was not pointed out is that in terms of neighborhood schools, perhaps the students are not leaving because they like the school. I mean, but I don't think that that question was posed to the parents. Maybe they like the school. Maybe they, and maybe they have a ton of friends there, that, that, that they don't wanna leave. I think those are two critical points that should not be left out of this report. You know, because, you know, folks, students, they like to be around their folks. And, and as far as the, the open enrollment, I think, you know, that it's excellent. And the reason why a lot of participants, or a lot of people who are not participating in those, in the open enrollment, because I mentioned two of them, well, maybe they don't know about it. Maybe they don't know that they have the ability, or if they had a choice, that they can go to this particular school. Maybe they don't know that. So, that's one thing that I, that I think that really needs to be more informational in terms to the public. The, let's see, the last thing? I think that was, oh, the, the doctor also stated that one of the reasons why they stayed is basically transportation and principal leadership. I don't think so. I don't think so at all. Think the reason why they stay, and I cited it earlier, is because maybe they like the school, maybe they like the neighborhood, and don't want to leave unless they feel threatened by one or two people. But the majority of them don't wanna leave. My personal opinion, but I have not done the research that the doctor have, but I, you know.
Any other comments? Again, we really appreciate Dr. Morris sharing with us. Director Stewart?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for the presentation as well. It's a very complicated subject, obviously. The motives and practice of open enrollment, the fact that it's so variable from year to year. But I think the, the sample size that you took was appropriate to gain the conclusions that you're coming to and to lead us in a direction of a discussion on how this affects the education that we provide, you know, moving forward statewide. And the effects that it has on those students who are left behind, so to speak. Because really and truly, when we look at it, education is about being educated and knowing what your options are, knowing what the effects on you are for either being involved or, or standing pat. So, I appreciate it. It's a discussion that will continue, but thank you for your research.
Director Uvalde?
I want to echo the appreciation to you, Dr. Morris. My curiosity is that if you will come up with the same conclusion, if it was done in a diverse community like Vallejo versus a community that may be one majority, ninety percent, particular ethnic group. And what would be your suspicion in regards to your conclusion? And what would be your suspicion in regards to your conclusion?
Thank you for the question. The one thing I left out is that the sample selection. So there was a stratified sampling. So looking at, so the surveys went out to a sample that represented all the groups. So the surveys didn't go out to primarily one group or another. But the difficulty with Vallejo is we only have two high schools. So is there a choice when you just have two? But you're right, every community is different. It'd be curious to see what would happen, conduct a study in the most diverse city in the United States, right? Yeah. But the sample, we tried to stratify the sample in such a way that it was representative. But again, looking at the responses, the people who respond are those that are that the folks in this room would be the ones to respond. You know, so not everybody responded. So take that with a little bit of, well, that is one limitation. But the broader, looking at the actual forty-two thousand students and the enrollment patterns is probably the most significant piece of the data.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
How long did it take you to write your dissertation?
About a year.
Including the research and everything?
Research, close to two years.
Thank you. Item nine point one point two. Vallejo High School Grand Jury Report Update. Let me see, do we have any cards? Oh, I'm sorry, nine point one. Berkey, you had, no, you were nine point one point two, sorry. Just to update you where we are in the process. We are planning to submit, is that, not right, tomorrow for the district and for Mr. Isador. I have until the fourteenth as board president. And I plan on, I guess, taking every bit of my time. I'm still collecting and information. I've tried to go to as many sources as possible. Sitting in on administrative training, sitting in on site safety officer training. Having attended graduation where I think the next day in the newspaper, the article cited where our, I guess it was a salutatorian, in her speech very eloquently addressed and defended her high school. So I've tried to go to many sources for information so that I'm not limited. PBIS. I went to the NEA website. And saw that they, the National Educators Association strongly supports and has a policy supporting PBIS. So being a person that likes to deal with facts and rather than I'm told something. And that's one of the reasons why I attend all these trainings. I know I'm going to be told things, but I want to know for myself. Because then it's, I'm a trained investigator. So it's just natural that I would want to get as much information and fact finding as possible. So that's one of the reasons why. My date is August fourteenth, and that's when I will be submitting. Any comments from board members? I have several cards on this area. And this is an action item for tonight. We, our next step will be in September. The responses, once finalized, will be presented. And we will hold a meeting at Vallejo High School, the same fashion that we did before, taking item by item. So the community will again have the opportunity, like we did at the beginning of the process. As we've said, we're not hiding from this issue. We recognize that there are issues throughout the nation. We recognize that there are issues at Vallejo High School. We also recognize that there are positive things going on. We also recognize that when it's, he said, she said, or teacher said, then I have to know more than, you can't give me numbers, that's the accounting in me. And not tell me what's behind those numbers. So I have to have all those facts before I can write a response or before I can finalize. I appreciate everyone who participated in the grand jury process. The teachers who gave their input, whomever else was talked to. I appreciate the grand jury. This is an opportunity for us to take a look at Vallejo High School. And it also is an opportunity for us to address concerns, to clarify any statements that were made or maybe misinterpreted, or whether the things that we need to work on, we're more than willing to work on. And we're not going through this. We own this report. We have not stuck it in the bottom drawer and forgot about it. We're not defensive about it. We are working very hard in a very positive manner to address the concerns in the grand jury report. Dr. Shosso? Your head's.
Before we start, I have a question. I have comments about nine of the recommendations. Do you want me to read them all, or do you want me to stop after each one, or what would be your pleasure?
You can read them all. We plan on, as I said at our September meeting, we will be, after we have finalized our report and our responses.
And I will also give you this paper and in some cases the questions. I'm not expecting an answer, but I'm just, it raises a question.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
First one is recommendation one. It is basically, however, it says the administration will ensure that all staff has direct access to campus safety personnel. Just how will that occur? Number two is the use of the community justice program. How will you deal with students who have drug and alcohol problems? No mention of counseling or anything was included in that section. Recommendation number five, the ID cards. I think allowing the students to use a cellphone instead of having an ID card may be defeating the whole purpose. The idea of that lanyard is, from a far away, I know whether you're legit or not. Maybe you have to give people a little slack, but I wouldn't, I think you have to have a mechanism where people get a new card real quick. Or you're going to go back to almost what you had before. Recommendation six about getting to class on time. Nowhere is there a standard such as maybe that they must be within the class in five minutes. If you're late more than X times, X occurs, or something like that. Recommendation number seven, pursuant to section forty-nine zero seventy-nine, Vallejo has developed a process where teachers are being informed of these students in a confidential format. And there was, other than a vague statement, how will this be done and are the teachers now in agreement with it? Recommendation number nine about discipline. I would ask the question, because nowhere has it been addressed. How are students being held accountable? And what will the principals and other people do to make sure that things are being enforced? Just sending them back to the classroom is not acceptable. And on recommendation thirteen about marijuana, where the school board has said it's a major issue, how is the school going to deal with students who appear under the influence of marijuana or other drugs? And returning them to the classroom, I don't think when you're that, if you're out of it, you shouldn't be going back into the classroom. And saying that the youth and family services have a comprehensive array of services is misleading. That is, their services are stretched to the limit. Are you willing to work with groups like Fighting Back Partnership, the halfway houses in our community and other people to partner to make, you know, use them as best you can instead of just relying on health and human services? And with both daily detention and with in-house suspension, I said it before, but I think you need to say it again, that you have to have people who are credential teachers. And if they're not, the purpose the state told me is, when you're in detention or in-house suspension, you're supposed to be taught. It's not supposed to be baked. I just have like ten, twenty seconds. And so therefore, I just urge you, you need to say what you're doing with these kids. And just letting them rot in, you know, or someone coming in every ten or fifteen minutes to check on them isn't the solution. To me, it almost ought to be like an alternative school. When you go into one of these rooms, you still are expected to learn, do your homework and all of the other things to make you a good citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Berkey Worrell?
President Wilson of the board. The first, my first comment is, this did not go out with the agenda on Friday, like it is supposed to. You people approved the agenda when you sit down here. If this hasn't come out, you need to revise your agenda and make sure that it's done properly. This is not the first time this board has done this. Information comes out and it's not fully out there for the public to see. So it's kind of hard to make a whole lot of comments because I just got it when I sat down here. But the first thing is, I think this board has overblown what this grand jury report is. Grand jury report is, nothing in here is about any criminal activity, any malfeasance, anything like that. It's all about procedures. So I think you guys have blown this way out of proportion in the community. If you haven't sent this letter, like you said, I would highly recommend in paragraph one, the next to last sentence, in this case, however, it appears that the grand jury's findings and recommendations recommendations suffer from factual and legal areas. I really don't think you need to put that sentence in there. I don't think we need to start any type of fight with anybody. If you're going to say that, then point out what the factual and legal errors are, because I don't see anything in here. The two items I would like to comment on is about the two-way radios and how they can't be given because of the traffic on them. Well, I came from a line of work where we, that's how we communicated most of the time, was through radios. And there are procedures that you implement so people aren't just randomly talking on that radio. That's not what it's for. So that can be addressed very easily. And if you want to give everybody a radio, that's fine. Now, all you do is set down the procedures of how you use that radio. Very easy. Like I say, I've did it for thirty years and, yeah, there's some problems sometimes with emergency situations. But those, especially in the schools, it would be far fewer than what it is, was in my line of work. The other thing was about the community resource officers. I talked about this before. Those of us that were here, when there were school resource officers, it was an excellent program. It was not a way, as one member of the community stated, that the police officers, the police was there to, as a pathway to kids going to prison. That's not what it was. It was an excellent program that worked quite well in this district. I think it helped more students than it hindered. I know we had a juvenile process where they came to the station and were counseled there. And in that way, they were kept out of the criminal justice system. So I think if those of you who do not understand what that was before, need to talk to people in this district of what it was about and how it did work. And it was a great asset to this community and to the students and to the teachers and to the faculty. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Sears?
Hello again.
Hello.
Everybody keeping up with it? Okay. Let's see. Wow. First, okay, the sentence about the factual legal errors, okay, change it, fine. I thought it was a little in-your-face with the grand jury. Fine, we won't be in-your-face with the grand jury. Instead, replace it with a very strong sentence that says, "The grand jury suffers from not respecting parents in this school district." How about that? How about no parents were interviewed on this report? I'm sorry, you, okay. I'm sorry. That is unacceptable. I've said it before, I will say it again, I will say it every time. Parents expect to be involved, especially since we've been involved and have been so much involved in the past two years, especially since Dr. Bishop has arrived. If the grand jury is a check and balance against abuses of authority and misuse of public funds, how can you not talk to parents in the school that you are investigating? Can you answer that for me, Robert?
Answer it, please. No, I'm joking.
Don't answer it, but the point is made. You should.
I'm joking.
The grand jury, the nineteen of you, talk to me, okay? Before you finalize your report next time, talk to me. I'm in the phone book. You can find me. I'm on, I'm easy to find. Okay, never mind, whatever. Going back to finding one about the radios. There was a funny comment on the Independent Bulletin that I just thought was hilarious. And I guess I'll take this time to read it. You may not think it's that funny, but it was about, I think, this finding. It says, "Think inside the box and then close the lid." I was surprised that no one suggested carrier pigeons delivering nine-one-one messages. Someone may have thought of this, but were afraid to present it because they didn't know what the cost per pigeon would be. And at first I was like, wow, okay. But then I remembered the discussion at the meeting and I was like, this is getting just way too much with the radios and the costs. I feel this response is very, this is how we've done it, this is how we're always going to do it. We can leverage technology in a better way. We in this district struggle with that. We know that. Vicmat tells us that. We don't have good funds for technology. We don't utilize it well. We have plans. We don't align them well. It's in the report, something we need to work on. The radio specifically is, get some more research. Leverage some practices from maybe other human service industries like healthcare. We have security problems at hospitals. We have to deal with things a lot. Not everybody carries a radio. We still try to get it done. Okay. The response to number two, the Positive Use Justice Initiative, the recommendation of grand juries about this probation officer or community resource officer. And we talk about, you know, positive use justice, which refers to the Solano County Probation Department. Are they aware, are they supportive of the PYJI? Or do they want an officer here? Like, would they agree with this recommendation?
They're sitting at the table.
It seems kind of odd that the grand jury wouldn't know that an entity within their own justice system are involved. That seems a little odd to me, but okay. On response number four about the blind spots on the cameras. Grammatically, it wasn't really sure. It says Vallejo High Administration, Vallejo City Unified District Cabinet members will have discussed timelines for cameras. Will have discussed. You mean by now, we haven't discussed it? It's August. We need to have it discussed. We have to have a plan. They will be phased in in the 2012-13 school year? I guess they, were they? I don't know. I was thinking, if this already happened, just say it did. I don't know, maybe I'm being stuck on grammar, sorry. Then it goes on about this, I don't know, I need more info here. The board asked, something about a threat? And something about cameras in this party. Why is this even in here? Why was, I mean, it's interesting info. Was this why the report was, why we were investigated? Is that why? Was that the trigger? Because, you know, it says highly publicized complaints from staff, parents and students. But staff are the only ones that got interviewed. So where are the parents and the students? I mean, students have come forward and other parents. But where did the grand jury get their info to say that all this was a problem? And then, so why are we pointing this out again? It makes it kind of confusing, okay. Okay. The swiping of the badges, God, the badges, get off the badges. Suggestion, swipe card access to, you know, I had a badge. I had to carry it with me. I went home from work if I didn't have my badge. I couldn't get in. Just, don't let me in the door. Can't go to work. Sorry, can't go to school. A little different, I get that. If I can't drive all the way back from Oakland to Vallejo, then the security office gives me one right there. Just 20 minutes less. So I hope we have something like that for our students. It shouldn't be that big of a deal. The grievance that's mentioned in recommendation eight, was this another trigger for the grand jury report? Because they don't like that we didn't give them data, so they grieved on us? So instead of just going through the due process, they go to the grand jury? Was that what happened? Ah, kind of interesting. I don't know. Lots of speculation, I know, but what a waste of time. Why can't we just be partners instead of always, you know, stabbing each other in the back? Whatever. Okay. Response nine A, I think. Robert, you were saying, students aren't being held accountable. How about we say in the future, students and adults need to be held accountable? Okay? Because I get offended as a parent, you want to always hold my son accountable? You got to hold the adults. Hold me accountable? Hold everybody in this room accountable? But it's no longer just the students. I'm tired of talking about our kids like they're bad kids. Some kids are bad, but they get a second chance. Adults do. Right? Anyway, sending adults back to class is unacceptable. They haven't been held accountable. That's all my comments, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Willie Mims.
Add to the board again, and to the citizens of Vallejo, I just ask that you read the WASC report. And what that WASC report talked about at Vallejo High School, the overall theme running through that report was a change in culture. And so when the previous speaker talked about holding accounts, I mean, holding adults accountable, she's talking about a culture mindset that's going on at that site that has to change. This was in the grand, I mean, in the WASC report, that the, I assume that the grand jury did not read and had no intention of reading. My other concern is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to draw all of these. I'll use that for another day. But my concern is who did the grand jury interview? And the other question, my overall concern is, the last time I was here, Dr. Bishop, you were not here. The gentleman came up here, the doctor came up here and said that he was a member of the grand jury, but he was not representing the grand jury. That somewhat alarmed me. So who is he representing today? Since he said that he, that the previous time that I was here, for a member of the grand jury to come before you with this report that you are responding to, I think that that is almost like they're trying to intimidate you. I think there's not, I mean, the grand jury has stated that their report to you about what's, what they feel is going on at Vallejo High School. That's what they stated. So why is a member of the grand jury coming here, talking to you about your report before you even respond to it? I mean, so that is an alarming concern to me. I think that the grand jury, their, the members should stay on the sidelines. They've already written their report. They've already attacked you. So they need to stay on the sideline and let everything take its course. They don't need to send someone here at all to keep responding to some of these accusations. They need to stay on the sideline. So that is my personal opinion of what they should do. And I think that in some parts, I, in terms of the first, the last sentence in the report, I'm like Berkey Worrell. You know, when you say, when you talk about factual and legal errors, then you should cite something that's factual and legal in the report, and that's not cited in there. Also, I did not see this report either online. I looked and, maybe I missed it, but I, you know.
It's very indicative of attachments.
I must have missed it. Sometimes I miss things and I can't catch everything. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say about this report.
Was it online?
Thank you.
It was online. If you go deep enough, you can find it for this view.
Deborah.
In my email that I get from the board, I don't think I saw it there. I did have to go to the website and it wasn't in the locker, so that's where I think I found it.
So it was there? Okay.
Yeah, I got it before the meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it was there. Thank you, Mr. Mims. Yes.
Just a couple of things. Certainly, again, appreciate all of the public comment and helps us all the time. And I just want to confirm some things. One, we just looked at the website and the response is actually on the website. Two, with regard to our administrators, Tammy, are you a certificated teacher? Dr. Morris, are you a certificated teacher? Mr. Isador, are you a certificated teacher? Okay. Also, it's my understanding, I've read the minutes, and it seems like Dr. Schossel is a member of the grand jury and I wasn't sure if you're representing or if the foreman.
I see.
I see, okay.
You sound alarmed by that.
Understood. Okay, I just wanted to understand because I wasn't at the meeting. And then lastly, with regard to the issues on security, we have vague language for a reason. And I think that needs to be clear to the community that you don't expose everything to the community about what you're doing with regard to security. So if there are vagaries in the language or it seems like we're hiding something, we are. And lastly, with regard to the proofreading issue, thank you for catching that, Ms. Sears. We'll change the have-will sentence before it's signed and sent, and it'll just say have. We do have a timeline. We're just not exposing it here. Thank you so much for allowing me to clarify, President Wilson.
This is an action item. And we will be making some changes to it.
Sorry, just the one word will come out. The paragraph where there's legal factual, that's a lawyer sentence, and we don't want to change that. We can't change that.
We have been in touch with our council, is that correct?
Yes, President Wilson, and this has been completely proofed by council. May I say one more thing with regard to kind of the statement about overdramatizing this? I just want to say that this grand jury report actually was blasted out to the community. And so we felt it was just really important, and I'll say, I'll speak for myself. I felt it was important to get some truth out there with regard to making sure that there was enough communication, that staff was communicating. You know, the rest, certainly the board had a strategy as well. But my issue as the superintendent representing the staff was really to make sure that the great work that's happening at Vallejo High School was spotlighted and that we didn't get cast in this light around our parents in our community. Thank you.
As president of the board, it's very important to me that we have an open opportunity for community to have input and our teachers, our staff, everyone to have input. And I think we had great input at our first meeting, and I expect we're going to have great input and comment at our second meeting. Because it only makes our schools better when everyone comes together and gives us their comments and their input and that they hear item by item. We take every one of the, was it 14, 15 items? And we go through every one of them. And it was a very effective forum, the first meeting, and we fully expect it to be the second meeting where we will have more information probably on specific actions, et cetera, et cetera. So I thank everyone for their comments this evening. And I was only teasing you when I said.
I'm not trying to.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't want you to go to jail. So, well, Hazel does it, but it was just a comment. Okay. What is the pleasure of the board? Director Stewart.
Thank you. Under the circumstances, I think this is an appropriate response. We are specific in some areas, we're vague in others. I think that's appropriate. I think the bigger issue or the bigger focus should be on how we go about affecting change from what has been brought to light and things that have been discussed in the community. This is not just a report about Vallejo High School. It's a report about schools. It's a report about the way we function and operate our schools. And so the focus has been on Vallejo High School, but the focus needs to be more global and broad about how are we administering our schools and what is the culture on our campuses? With that said, parents, students, teachers, staff across the board need to feel comfortable with the conclusions and the way forward on this. And so Vallejo High School, you're in the spotlight, but this needs to be something that we look at across the board, the way we talk to our staff, the way we talk to our students, the way the students talk to us, and the way we work together. And so, you know, this is still more or less a starting point. It's told, it's brought to light some things that we aren't very comfortable with, but need to get comfortable with because they need solutions. The fact that, the fact that we are vague, I think, is important in some of these areas, but it's about implementation. Some of these things we'll be following up. We'll have our meeting at Vallejo High School, and then we'll get really specific about how we're going to implement the things that need to change. But at this stage of the game, I think this is appropriate and barring some grammatical things here and there that will get cleaned up, which is my understanding. I'm in support of this. Thank you. And if there are any other comments.
Well, I just have one comment. In terms of, and I agree totally with what Director Stewart said, yes, this has been an agenda item on every agenda. And as we know, that if we had not had it on the agenda, that we would have heard comments that you're hiding from it, you're having your head buried in the sand, you're ignoring it, you're, and Mr. Worrell, you would have been making the comments. So I just appreciate the opportunity for us to be able to respond to the community and that everyone have as many opportunities as possible to state what their concerns are. So that gives us a better basis to address any concern that the teachers, safety is very important to this board. It's very important to this district. And it's our number one focus. We want to, for everyone to be safe. And so whenever we can get input, we want input. We want the best education for every child in this district. And as Director Stewart said, this is focused on Vallejo High School, and I applaud them for standing up to the challenge to be the focus and to give us responses and implementation of changes and we're giving us more factual information. So I applaud Vallejo High School. But it is every school, not only in this district, I'm president of Solano County School Boards Association, but every school, school in this county could benefit from this. And meeting with the other school board members and talking with them throughout the county, Vallejo High, you're no different than any other high school here, okay? So we applaud you and we will continue to work as a district to address these issues. And even at the end of the day in September, if this is not going to stop, this is a living doc, our response is a living document. It is not going to stop once we put it in the mail. We will still be reviewing and refining. So, any other comments by board members? If not, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the district response to the grand jury report about Vallejo High School.
I would second the same.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve with minor grammatical changes, the Vallejo High School grand jury update. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This report is approved. Item 9.1.3, this is an information item, Vallejo City Unified School District Policies for First Reading. This is the first reading of these policies. Are there any, I have no cards on it, are there any comments by board members? Oh, we do have one card. Mr. Willie Mims?
Of course, all of the numbers are good.
Did you have something on policy? 9.1.3, did you, board policies?
No, no.
Okay. That's an, that's an error. Okay. Are there any comments or discussion by board members on the board policies? This is, this is first reading for information, is an information item. And we will actually, they will come on the next agenda as an action item there, yeah, for second reading. Okay, moving on, personnel actions, 10.1. Good evening.
It is recommended that the governing board receive information on personnel actions.
Are there any questions? Comments? It's an information item. Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
Thank you.
And Ms. Patrick, I believe you have started your doctoral program, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you will be sharing down the road your dissertation?
I plan to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and we also have a new face to some in the room, but not to all of us. And I certainly would like for her to be introduced.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Do you want to do the honors? And then I have one more introduction after that.
Yes, it's my, my pleasure to introduce Sarah Hart. She is not unfamiliar of the Vallejo Unified School District. She was here several years ago and really set the foundation as what we have received today as far as our receivership back. So again, Sarah Hart is, has worked in Fairfield, has worked in Solano County, County Office and other school districts in helping them take care of a lot of the administrative and management components in the business service. We have her on board, and you may have heard it in one of our reports, is that to really provide us a transition as we secure our chief business officer in the future. She's here a couple of times a week. She is here during these board meetings, believe it or not, on her own time, believe it or not. That's how committed and passionate she is for the Vallejo Unified School District and the community. What's that?
I said true.
True. And she loves, and she loves Vallejo. She's also going to be a strong component to the, let's call it the combination of our director of business services, who's right next to her as far as providing reassurance and confidence as he moves, because he's brand new here and we want to make sure we protect not only him, but protect everything that our previous chief business officer has done. So again, I want to welcome Sarah Hart. And Sarah, do you want to say anything? Are you okay?
Just thank you for allowing me to.
All right. So again, we really definitely appreciate her passion and her commitment to the Vallejo Unified School District.
Thank you. And we welcome Ms. Hart. She has already hit the ground running, right? And also tonight, in the personnel appointments, you saw a name, Amy Parangan. And Amy Parangan has been a teacher leader with our district for And Amy Perangan has been a teacher leader with our district for quite some time. In fact, the year I came, she was teacher of the year. And now is moving into the role of school reform coordinator in the AAA department. And so, Ms. Perangan, can you come forward so that the board can see you and perhaps give some comments about the things that you've been up to or anything else you'd like to share at this time?
Excuse me. Good evening, Dr. Bishop, President Wilson, trustees, community members. I first and foremost would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue in the work that I'm both very passionate and committed about, especially because I think I work with a wonderful team, with coordinators, administrators, directors. And we all have the same vision, and that's to best serve the students of Vallejo. So some of the things that we have been working on just recently is providing professional development around the Common Core standards. In fact, we have a big training tomorrow at Highland Elementary, so feel, please feel free to stop by. We are also preparing for something that I think has been much needed, and that's a new teacher training. So, I really thank you for that opportunity. It's giving us, we're finally able to meet with all of them at the same time, introduced ourselves, and also talk about all of the wonderful ways that we can support education in Vallejo. So, that's kind of what we've been up to for the past few weeks.
Thank you, and welcome to both of you ladies. We're very excited for you and very good. And it's great seeing Sarah again, I've known her previously, so. And congratulations on your new appointment. Thank you. Moving to the consent calendar. Eleven point oh. Does anyone wanna pull anything off? Okay. Okay, so we'll need to pull from, from the community. Eleven point two. Eleven point three. Eleven point eleven. And eleven point twelve. Does the board have any that they would like to pull?
Eleven six.
Eleven six. Anything else? Okay. Eleven point one. Yeah. Get that card back, we'll change it to eleven. Okay, well eleven point one, Mr. Willie Mims?
Yes, to the board, Willie Mims, a former teacher at Peoples High School. And I was looking at the board agenda and then the staff report and the recommendation that Peoples High School's name be changed to John Finney High School. So I just, that was one of the main reasons why I came tonight, because John Finney, you know, is a man that I highly respect. I learned a lot from him. He was my principal when, well, he was the one who hired me. And what I learned from him was his compassion and, and his desire to appreciate and to respect all children and their parents. I've never, I've, I've not known one person like him. He, one thing that he taught me is how to stop fights. You know, that's, that's a skill, you know, that, that very few people have. You know, you know, but not only that, but I, I learned from him by just observing him, how he dealt with students, how he dealt with the parents, how he would talk to them in a calm and collected way, how he would listen to them about their complaint or their concerns. And so, from him, from my experience with working under him, I learned a lot. And so I come here this day to greatly recommend that you seriously consider this man's name to be changed. I mean, consider Peoples High School's name to be changed to John Finney High School. John Finney, when he was the principal, was the one who changed the name of Peoples High School, two, changed the name to Peoples High School. Prior to him coming to Peoples High School, there was no order on that campus. Students hardly ever went to class at all. In fact, it was a student-run school until John Finney came. John Finney showed the students who was, who was in control. He showed the staff who was in control. So he regained control of that campus and, and brought a respectability that's still there today. So, in closing, I highly recommend that, because he's someone, like I said, who hired me, so he hired somebody that was great. Thank you.
I totally agree with you on that. John Finney is really an icon. And definitely, this is something that I support. Eleven point two and eleven point three, Deborah Sears?
So, at the risk of asking a really stupid question, but I just...
There are no stupid questions.
This is where I ask them. In relation, I guess, I just need a little clarification. This tax resolution versus our bonds, bond measures? Any kind of education, give me real quick.
Okay, well CFD number two is a, is a community facilities district that was established for the new area that was, we call it the Hiddenbrook, North, North Gate community. That's everything from Bethel, Wardlaw, and Hiddenbrook. And so there was a tax base that was established for those types of growth. CFD number three is a, is a community facilities district that has areas throughout the community that, they're just spotted areas that were treated as areas that, that needed a tax, tax bases were being developed in those areas. There's a map that shows where those areas are, it's not the entire community, just certain areas. Whenever there is growth in those areas that are on that CFD, those are where the funds come from. So, again, those are two components of finances, I mean, revenue. There's another revenue base, which is a really smaller one, which is, it comes up every once in a while. It's called the Montiff Report, which is developer fees. And developer fees is a smaller amount, which comes from, you know, basically develop, increases of home, increases of residents that are above 500 square feet. So there's, there's, there's a small amount of fees that are, that are pulled up from that so we can have revenue sources as well for facilities.
Okay. So these compared to bonds? Are these bonds, or these, you know, bond measures? So like, I guess, let me just, on my tax assessor thing?
Right, you'll see...
I see lots of little things, and it says school stuff, right? I know I'm overgeneralizing, but... What is this versus that? Stuff I see, and then the bonds that we're talking about, that, how does that play into these?
Well, these are specifically, these, the community facilities are specific to those particular areas. Bonds are for the, geobonds is global, the entire community.
Thank you. So I would only see these things if I live in a spot-focused area that's throughout the community, which is number three.
Correct.
So it could be like a neighborhood, maybe, or a few parcels of land somewhere.
Correct.
And the other one is around Hiddenbrook specifically?
Yeah, North Gate.
So you have number two all over your tax per, okay. Way to go, Bob!
And we, and we appreciate all that as well.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
Eleven point six. Mr. Stewart? Director Stewart?
Dr. Stewart is my father.
That's right.
So the work out there, the Safe Routes to School work, the ADA, that's, you know, you head out there all the time. It's, it's still pretty chewed up out there. If it's not done by the start of the school year, do we have a contingency plan for traffic and everything else that goes on? Because the reason that work's being done is because it's dangerous. And so, if it's not done, what are we gonna do in the meantime to make sure that we don't have kids getting hit or, or folks driving into the ditch? I mean, it's chewed up out there, as you know.
Right, well, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield to Steve Lane. He's been overseeing that project, so maybe he can shed some light on what the schedule looks like.
Thank you, for the question, and good to see all of you again. The project is a little behind schedule, but it also, it was mostly because the amount of ADA work was not originally caught. I think they're fine, I think they're gonna make it. You are correct, it is, it is chewed up there right now. They really just have to finish, to just pour a little bit more concrete, and it's gonna look a lot better. I'm actually gonna meet with the city representative this week, and we're gonna go over that. And if there is a chance that it's not looking good, we'll develop a contingency plan. I think a lot of it, just you see piled rock, and, you know, there's still forms up and stuff like that. So I think we're gonna be okay.
I'll look for an update.
Indeed.
Well, I'd like to just add a little bit. What, you know, trustee Stewart, is that the major elements were are the hardscape, the concrete components, those things are in place. So, you know, once they, those are all, all pretty much cured, because they've been there. So now it's just a matter of them coming back in there and doing the asphalt. But time will tell. Thank you.
Deborah Sears, eleven point eleven and eleven point twelve.
Thank you for, whoa, hearing me out, especially on these consent items. I know they're, it's just questions, okay. So on contracted services, I saw there were some consultants on the list, either individuals by name or contracts with vendors that provide tutors or things like that, I guess. So it brought to mind, how do we evaluate, orient, measure, align with our goals, track the effectiveness of consultants when they are providing a program to our students? You know, I'd expect that all adults, again, our thing is all adults, right? So, do we have that kind of ingrained or not in that? And then on eleven point twelve, on the master contracts, my, I don't have it in front of me, I think it was listing various entities, agencies that provide special services to our children, right? So, yet again, from like a credentialing perspective, how do we vet? Does the board know that all these are clear? There's no sanctions, there's no flags, there's no federal offenses, there's nothing here. What assurances do you get? I'm used to seeing documents at boards related to these kinds of things that actually say, "The board assures that these things have been done, and I'm signing as a board member my accountability to that." So, again, this is education, a little different, but I presume you might have some info for me? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Couple things. With regard to contracted services that align with AAA, we can very specifically tell the effectiveness of them. We take star pre and post, and we try and figure out, let's say, for example, we have a contractor that's working on coaching teachers in algebra. It's very simple, did the kids pass and, or didn't they? And if they didn't after that year, they don't work with us anymore. We also have aligned our system. The board designates myself or designee to come up with a process and procedure for contract approval. And we've realigned that particular approval process to ensure that we have contractors that can really, that are focused on help us, helping us meet our goals and have a track record that we, a documented track record of working in a large urban school district and actually doing X, whatever X is. And so that process, again, has been realigned to ensure that people do. And if they don't, and we're reviewing and trying to figure out whether we sign again. Staff get lots of notes from me saying, "I wanna see X or Y." In fact, I just sent Mitch a note about program evaluation on some of the supplemental education service providers that are serving our kids. Because I wanna see whether or not they are. Thank you for asking the question. So basically, the process, the initial application process allows for people, they have to prove their track record in the process. And then, once they come, we evaluate whether they're effective annually and make decisions annually. Good question. We measure different things depending on what the contractor's providing. So I can't say the same, I would say differentiated. Because some contractors are working with us on academic goals, some contractors are working with us on fiscal goals. So it's just different depending on the provider. But the annual review is the same.
That covers the consent items. Is there a motion to approve?
Point of information. Do we approve those who were not lifted up together?
Approve them all now?
Are we gonna approve all of them now?
All of them now?
Then if that's the case, I move that we adopt the consent items before us.
I would second eleven point one through eleven point thirteen.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve items eleven point one through eleven point thirteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the consent items are approved. There's no community forum needed. We need to adjourn this meeting to go to the special one, right? Future board agenda items? Director Mumsen?
I would request a brief information, study and update on the local control funding formula and what are our plans for the near future and then the not-so-near future. I know it's still kind of vague as to what we have to do, but I just wanna see where we're, where we're at, what our thinking is. Thank you.
Any other? Announcements, our next board meeting is August 21st. Well, no, yeah, we're gonna have a special board meeting in just a second. But our next regular meeting is August 21st. This meeting is adjourned. I'm now calling to order the special board meeting for August 7th. Roll call.
Trustee Waterman is absent. Trustee Mumsen?
Present.
Trustee Stewart?
Still here.
Vice President Ubaldi?
Here.
President Wilson?
Present. Adoption of board agenda?
Madam President, I move that we adopt the board agenda for this special board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt agenda as printed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The agenda is adopted as printed. Item three point one, 2013, 2014 school bell schedules and instructional minutes. Sherri, do you wanna say anything?
What you have before you are the schedules for all of our school programs. These will be the schedules that schools will be adhering to for the 13, 14 school year, and they require board approval.
Any questions or comment by board members? Director Stewart?
So taking a look at this, and not having a side-by-side comparison, our bell schedules... are bell schedules are changing for any sites?
There, for the most part, these schedules are staying the same. Um, there may be some schools that have changed, um, some of the placement of the minimum days, um, based on things like rallies or things like that. But other than that, the schedules would be remaining the same, start and end times.
Thank you.
And, um, every school has the required instructional minutes because that can become an odded area that can cost us money.
Correct. So, each of these schedules is checked at the school site, checked by my office and then checked by Ms. Chaney's office.
Okay, if Ms. Chaney has approved it, then I know that it must be correct. Yes.
In, in the interest of full disclosure, it, it may be the case that we need to make an adjustment in our Loma Vista Environmental Science Academy because of its K through eight status. And so, we're still working. There's some process we have to work through with VEA on that. So, that could come back to you.
Okay, okay, but as we know it today, this is it?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have no cards for community forum. I'm sorry, we gotta approve it. I'm really trying to get out of here.
Madam President, if there are no other comments or concerns, I'd like to move that we adopt three point one. And that is approve the school bell schedule and instructional minutes for twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen school year.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school bell schedules and instructional minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The school, uh, bells, schedules and instructional minutes are now approved. We have no cards for community, from community members. This meeting is adjourned.